Good evening and welcome to the Gladstone Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, July 15th at 6:30 PM. First thing I'd like to do is call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Present.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Carlson.
Present.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute, please.
Friday again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item that we would like to take care of this evening is the oath of office for our new planning commissioner. Sherri, is it Grau? Grau?
Let me just stand over on the other side here. If you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I Sherri.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And the Charter and Municipal Code of the City of Gladstone.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of planning commissioner for the City of Gladstone.
Perform the duties of planning commissioner for the City of Gladstone.
During my entire term, so help me God.
During my entire term, so help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Let me get.
Welcome. We already have a chair waiting for you.
Yes. And then you'll have one copy and I'll have a copy. And then we'll have you come take a seat. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Sherri. Let you go ahead and get settled. Okay. Consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a commission member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. The very first item before we let our mayor speak, the approval of the June 17 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I just wanted to make a note that the minutes that were in the packet are incorrect and the June 17 minutes should be in front of all the commissioners.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the June 17 meeting minutes on a secondary piece of paper.
A second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Weiss and seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Grau.
Yes. I was going to not include you on that one because you hadn't had a chance to really review them, so.
And Chair Smith.
Yes. Meeting minutes approved. Now, before we move on to our regular agenda, our mayor would like to say a few words regarding, well, regarding the positions and how they're qualified.
Thank you, Chair Smith. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm Michael Milch, the mayor of Gladstone. I want to begin by expressing my appreciation to all of you for serving in this capacity, particularly those of you that are new, that I haven't worked with in the past. And so you have a unique role to play in the work of the city and I'm grateful to you for serving. We just appointed Sherri Grau as our newest commission member. And in doing that, some questions came up because we have a provision in our Gladstone Municipal Code, which I think comes out of some provisions that are in the Oregon State law regarding the occupations of people who serve on a planning commission in a city. And it reads like this, "No more than two voting members of the commission may engage principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit as individual, or be members of any partnership or officers or employees of any corporation that engages principally in the buying, selling, or developing of real estate for profit." Whenever we have an opening on the council, we usually get a list of the current commission members, excuse me, and their occupations, but sometimes it's not real clear from those descriptions whether or not they fit into that category. So I want to ask all of you now, how many of you can say with certainty that you do not fit in that category to which we're limited to only two people? Raise your hand if you're pretty sure that that does not apply to you. Okay, and Andrial, I want to ask you because you're one of the ones who I thought it might apply to because you do construction. Is it because your construction work is not related to housing?
We don't own or we're just general contractors.
Okay.
We don't own the property.
So you don't own it, sell it, that aspect of it?
Correct.
Okay?
Yeah.
Now, you did not raise your hand. Would you think that this does or does not apply to you, Commissioner Volbada?
I assume it does. Managing construction and real estate for Nike where it is property owned. I would assume it does.
Oh, so you're not just building buildings for Nike itself?
No, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yep, it's just retail. So no, there's no residential or anything.
Okay. All right, so developing in real estate for profit?
Yep.
Okay, so, all right, it went the opposite of what I thought it was going to be. I thought that you only built buildings for a particular company and it wasn't to sell to the public.
Originally, yes.
Originally, okay, all right. See, now this is why we need this clarification. Now, Commissioner Grau, you indicated on your application you had some involvement in affordable housing and nonprofits. And let me, and do you want to clarify your answer or your response on this?
Sure, I was just thinking that. I, until very recently, was in real estate development of affordable housing, working for various nonprofits, but I've kind of made the switch into lending. So I work for an affordable housing lender now. I'm not in development.
Okay, so currently then, based on your responses, Commissioner Langston, you would be the only one in this category now. And if there are other openings on the commission in the future, we could have another, an applicant who does fit that category and it would be okay. All right, it's good to have that. Go ahead.
One question?
Yes.
If for some reason my employer had to foreclose on a property and then we became the owner, would that be an issue?
I don't think it was because this would be, this refers to the buying, selling, or developing of real estate. I mean, any individual, you won't, some of you may own your own home and you may want to sell your home, but that's not the business you're in. So, okay, that gives me some clarification. I have found during my experience on the planning commission that it's great to have people who are in the construction-related industries because often questions comes up about permitting processes and timing of construction and materials being used. So I was always grateful that we had people that knew way more about that than I did. And the scope of your work extends to a lot of other things. Sometimes it's good to have people who just have a life experience of having lived next door to somebody who kept chickens in their backyard because you can weigh in on those kinds of ordinances and things that we have. So each of you brings special skills to the commission. You do your work well. I'm officially the council liaison to the planning commission. I rarely attend the meetings in person because many times on your agenda are quasi-judicial land use hearings, which are subject to appeal to the city council. And so in order that I don't hear one set of information at your meeting and then if it comes to appeal, hear it again and have to, you know, excuse myself from participating, I usually don't attend. Sometimes I wait till the appeal period is over and then I'll look back at your minutes on video and see what a great job you did handling the situation. And that's why it didn't go to appeal because you did it right. So I will sit back tonight. The item that we have, does it qualify as a quasi-judicial hearing?
It is, it's gray area between quasi-judicial and legislative. It's for sure coming to city council, but it's coming by recommendation. So it's not coming on appeal, so there's no reason you can't.
Not coming on appeal. Okay, well, I'll sit in and watch that. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Milch. Okay.
You may want our new commissioner to introduce herself and maybe let the commission know a little bit about herself.
Sherri, share with us, please.
Hi, I'm Sherri Grau. I have been on a planning commission before for the city of Milwaukee a while back and I moved down to San Diego for a while and then I moved back to buy a house in Gladstone. So here I am and it's just, it's a very good way to get to know your community and and kind of what's going on and hope to shape the future of Gladstone. So I thought it would be a good opportunity.
Great. Do you have any questions of any of us?
Not at the moment. Maybe at some point.
How long did you serve on the planning commission for the city of Milwaukee?
Oh, my goodness. Maybe, oh gosh, maybe a couple of years. I was on the Design and Landmarks Committee before that and I've been on various project advisory committees for affordable housing. I've been in affordable housing for a really long time. Worked with LMC quite a bit, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Tammy?
No, sorry.
No, that's fine. That's a great suggestion. Thank you. Regarding our regular agenda, we're going to be looking at number two, monthly planning report. Item three, a public hearing, proposed annexation of three parcels, 17560, 17580, and 17620 Kirkwood Road into the City of Gladstone file ANX-25-01. And item number four is continued discussion of design review process and updates to Gladstone's Municipal Code, Chapter 17.80, Design Review Standards. Okay, item number two, monthly planning report. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Smith. In the packet is your monthly planning report for the month of June. It was a fairly busy month. I think definitely some folks were on vacation or not calling in as much and not putting in as many building permits forward as we're used to seeing, but otherwise we kept busy. We had two pre-application meetings, one with CLACCO Kids for the childcare facility that was formerly run by the YMCA on Webster Road and one for some improvements to the Ron Tonkin Kia site. There is a note on there that the Gladstone Nature Park Loop Trail was in design review and we did issue an approval on that with conditions. So that is moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
I'm really curious about the nature park. What are they doing?
Oh, they are putting in a paved loop trail. It'll connect to the trail that comes from the parking lot and it loops around on the existing bark chip trail, but redesigned a tiny bit for, it's not fully ADA compliant, but it does match the Oregon Parks and Rec requirements for accessibility, so it'll be paved all the way through.
And what were the, you said it was approved with a couple of?
With conditions. What were the conditions? Like getting the proper permits, getting the proper grading permits from Clackamas County, making sure they have erosion control addressed. The path itself is about 1,000 feet long by six feet wide, so 6,000 square feet. And our erosion control standard kicks in at 5,000 square feet, so they'll need an erosion control permit. I think that was the primary ones.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In the application process, did it indicate the funding was from a grant that they received?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, I believe that one was a metro grant. I'm kind of looking towards Tammy. Yes, nature neighborhoods.
Any other questions, commissioners? Joe, you look like you have a question.
I thought it interesting to work note, the day after I asked you about what was happening with Wong's Building Supply, they poured a footing.
Wow.
They poured a footing for their new building.
You were omniscient about something about to happen.
Okay, if there isn't any questions or anything else, we'll move on to item number, what was that, three? And that would be, I'm going to open up the hearing. The public hearing is now for application number ANX-25-01. This public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering that application number. And it is Tuesday, July 15th at 6:52, yeah, 6:52. Okay. Okay, thank you. There's a glare and I can't really see it. Thank you very much. The procedure we would like to follow tonight is the planning department report, applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent testimony, applicant rebuttal, decision to continue or close the hearing, and planning commission discussion and decision. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify himself or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant expertise or pre-hearing contacts? Please indicate if you visit the site in connection with this application. I'll start with Commissioner Volbada.
No expertise contact. Yes, I'm familiar with the site. I wasn't able to go by it this week, though, and I will be participating.
Commissioner Weiss.
I'm aware of the site. I did not visit in conjunction with this application, but I do plan to participate.
Excellent. Commissioner Langston?
Yep, no expertise contact and just familiar with the site, never been there.
Okay, Commissioner Carlson?
No expertise contact or conflict of interest. I did not visit the site, but I did kind of study it and I am aware of it and I do plan to participate.
Okay. Commissioner Grau?
No expertise contact for me. I did not visit the site, but I did kind of look on the maps to see where it's at and I will be participating.
Excellent. Commissioner Brennan?
No expertise contact for me and I am vaguely familiar with the site, but I did not visit it in person, although I did look at it on like Street View, Google Maps. And I do look forward to participating tonight.
Thank you. No expertise for myself. I did what Commissioner Brennan did and looked on Google Maps. I have not been personally to the site and I do plan on participating. Is, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Okay, is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council on this matter? Okay, Oregon land laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or in the alternative to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude any action for damages in circuit court. If you are going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report?
Thank you, Chair Smith. We have a brief PowerPoint for you this evening. I will just add on to the quasi-judicial script that we gave you because, as the mayor asked, is this quasi-judicial or is it legislative? It's sort of both and neither in a way because annexations are not considered fully land use actions. They're administrative decisions by city council. Some cities don't have annexations go to the planning commission. Some cities don't even require a hearing at all. It's a matter of making sure it meets all the criteria and moving through the process of getting it through the State of Oregon, the Department of Revenue and all of that to change the taxation district. So all that said, that quasi-judicial script said that we, this is the last chance to raise any issues, but we will have a hearing at the planning commission or, excuse me, city council on August 12th on this matter. So tonight we'll be asking planning commission to make a recommendation and then city council will hold its own public hearing to make a final decision. Okay, so let me just get this on, make sure I can make it work. Yay! So this evening we are here to discuss the proposed annexation of three properties on Kirkwood Road. What's up? Oh, sorry. Oh, what happened? It was working. Was that you that moved it back? Maybe, maybe I didn't turn it on here. Okay, I'm just going to ask you to advance it. There's only like four slides. Thank you. The proposed project is to annex these three properties into the City of Gladstone. The purpose for the annexation is to connect to public sanitary sewer service. These properties are currently on septic tanks. Next slide, please. The zoning is currently in Clackamas County, an R10, so that's a residential zoning district. The Gladstone Comprehensive Plan shows low-density residential for this area. So we will be applying the R7.2, which is our lowest density zoning district, to these properties upon annexation. The utilities will all remain the same. It will continue to be served by Clackamas Water. There's no sanitary, excuse me, storm water service in this area. So it'll just be the Gladstone Sanitary Sewer that'll be connected through the Water Environment Services as well, through Tri-County Sewer District. We did send out public notice and agency notice and unique to annexations per the metro requirements is to post on the site. So there is a posted notice on the property saying this property is being proposed for annexation and gave these meeting dates. We also sent out that information to all property owners within 250 feet of the site and sent to all of our agency partners. Next slide, please. So that gets us kind of right into our recommended conditions of approval. I think at your spot this evening, you have some comments from the Gladstone Public Works Department. These came in a little later than they typically would. There was just a little bit of communication going on behind the scenes between Public Works and the engineering consultant. But the important thing here is that these proposed comments really relate to the sanitary sewer portion of development rather than the annexation itself. So I do have a recommendation on one of the conditions, but I don't think it's a major change based on what the Public Works Department put forward there. So in order to move forward after the city approves annexation, the applicants will need to also annex into the Tri-City Service District. That's for the sanitary sewer system. They'll need to withdraw from North Clackamas Parks and Rec and Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District because parks and police services will be provided by the city. The R7.2 zoning district applies automatically with annexation in Gladstone. We don't need a separate zone change to do that. The application included the portion of Kirkwood Road adjacent to these properties, but the Gladstone Public Works Director actually would prefer it to be just the properties at this time as most of Kirkwood Road is in Clackamas County jurisdiction. So if there's a time in the future when it makes sense for Kirkwood to come into city jurisdiction, he'd like to do that all at one time rather than piece by piece.
So does that mean they'll still be on unincorporated property taxes as opposed to City of Gladstone?
No, their properties will be in the city. It'll just be the street in front of them. If there's a pothole repair or something that's going to happen through Clackamas County rather than City of Gladstone until we.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you.
Yeah. Next slide, please. The conditions six and seven are particular to the property at 17620, so the southernmost property in this. It has a little blue dot on it. I should have made it a little more obvious. The staff report findings find that the, thank you, that the project is, the other two properties are in full compliance with the city's regulations, but finds that this property in particular is not meeting some standards of setbacks in the development code. So that would be something the planning department would oversee applicability of. So the containers in the front yard setback, the width of the driveway and automobiles parked on it, and then any accessory structures in the rear yard not meeting setbacks. And then the police department, the Gladstone Police Department did provide comments that they would be looking to have the property come into compliance with noxious weed standards and junk removal standards. And there is a mistake in the staff report where I note that there's no definition of junk. In talking with our city recorder, she said, "There is a definition of junk," and I went back and sure enough, there was. And it pertains to cars that aren't moving, utility appliances that are not working, metal, wood. It has a clear definition of what that is. So it's not a discretionary decision of the Gladstone Police Department to determine that that standard's met at the time that it needs to be made. So those additional conditions would apply before that property could annex into the city. But once those conditions are met, they could have the city planning department and police department review the property to make sure they're in compliance with all city standards and then they could proceed with their annexation process. The other two properties, as reviewed, just the standard conditions would be recommended at this time. Are there any questions about that? That's a little complicated.
I don't know how to say this properly. I know in the summer, there's a couple of churches within the community that can help property owners clean up their land or help with gardening, et cetera. I don't know if this individual would be eligible for that kind of assistance if there's any need for help to remove the things.
Yeah, I do not know, but we do have the neighbors here this evening, I think. And we could definitely hear from them and have that conversation as well and provide resources as needed.
Excellent, because I know they do that in the summer and if they need some assistance, we might want to get them connected with that church that's doing it.
Great. Next slide, please. The other conditions are related to the sanitary sewer installation that would occur after annexation and annexation into the Tri-City Service District. Because of the Public Works Condition Letter that was issued today, I did change out condition 10, which was getting building grading and erosion control permits and just revise that so that it includes building grading, erosion control, and right-of-way permits to make sure we cover all the bases for what Public Works would need as far as reviewing any work in the public right-of-way. And again, that's city public right-of-way, so county would issue permits for anything happening in Kirkwood. But as proposed and as determined feasible by our Public Works Department, it seems like the sanitary is going to come from a neighboring property through an easement rather than from Kirkwood Road. Any questions about those conditions applicable to the sanitary sewer line?
Just one question. So the easement for the sewer already exists?
It does, yeah. The city will require documentation of that and if it needs to be updated in any way, then the applicants will have to provide that.
And does the property owner at 17666 know that?
Yes, I do believe there's been communication with that property owner and a lot of investigative work being done by our Public Works Department, applicants, surveyor, that sort of thing.
Okay, and Public Works is okay with a sewer line running through someone else's property?
Yes, as long as the easements are in place, as long as it's a public easement. And that is the other issue with making sure that there's a clear easement through the property that has, you know, a lot of structures in the backyard, making sure that's available to bring the sanitary sewer line through.
Thank you.
Yep. I believe that is it. Is there another slide, Tammy? Oh, yes, just the recommendation. So with those recommended conditions of approvals, planning staff recommend that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council. And we do recommend that for their meeting on August 12th of this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions?
So is there a main, an existing main that runs up Kirkwood?
There is, I'm not sure. Let me pull that up.
From below. Oh, yeah. Okay, so then there would be, I'm just like trying to think of as far as construction goes, that would kind of end up needing right-of-way work then.
If they did come through Kirkwood, which is not, I think, the plan, but the Route B does.
Oh, from the back.
Yeah, so if they did have to do Route B, then they would have to do straight work and that would require a right-of-way permit. So that would, you know, include like returning into light condition upon completion. But I think everybody um, is in agreement that Route A is the most likely scenario. Um, but it does note in here that the um, line was not fully scoped, um, doesn't go all the way to the term terminus.
Got it.
So.
So just to be clear, they want to try to do this uh, through the easement and not through?
Yes.
Okay.
That is definitely the, the desired approach.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have an estimated cost on the sewer extension?
No, I don't, but the applicant may.
Okay. Sorry, it, does the city incur that cost?
No.
Or the applicant?
Yep. Yep.
But the, the city will need to extend the main?
No, the city um, if, if the main is needing to be extended, that's the expenses on the applicant.
Okay.
To do that. Yep.
Cool, thank you.
Will the city require an estimate for that upfront?
They require um, an estimate for the work because that's how they determine the fees for their review. So I don't know the exact percent, but I think it's like three or four percent of the estimated cost of the work is how much the fee is to review the work. So they do require that when, when they're looking at those public improvement plans, once it gets fully annexed and then it's time to actually start um, drawing up how they're gonna do the sanitary sewer line. They've done the scope work. Yep, we know what's there. We know where it's gonna be. Here's the legal easement. Now we're ready to go start building it, then they'll need to provide that.
Okay.
If everything goes well, kind of considering from like today on, how long would this take?
Um, well, we have the hearing at city council and then we have water environment services annexation um, or the tri, the tri-city annexation. Um, and then there's documentation to Department of Revenue and Secretary of State for the removal from the taxing districts and things. So there's still a couple months of administrative work, um, and then the engineering piece, like the feasibility and things. So I don't, I don't know.
And then the permits as well, so.
The permits, yeah. The city is really pretty quick with the engineering permits um, side of things. If Clackamas County needs to issue grading permits on the private property and things, they're usually pretty quick as well. Um, but it's getting through the administrative pieces that I think it's gonna take a little while. And then depending on um, time of year, you know, if we get into the wet season and things, those types of things.
Um, on the, the sheet.
Mm-hmm.
For Route A, the main, it go, you know, we've got, we've got the main not on Kirkwood
Mm-hmm.
in front of like 7625, right? And then we've got the lateral, the eight-inch CSP that's red and then the orange line.
Yes.
Are, are all of those existing?
Yes, so the-
Okay, so the, the lines through 7625 exist.
Yes.
Great.
And that structure is there too? Is that what that is?
Yeah, although, you know, sometimes with GIS, it's not incredibly accurate. I don't know if it goes under that building or next to that building. But yes, those are existing. What, 7625?
It's on Ridgewood. It's on Ridgewood.
Comes from 7625 Ridgewood.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the line should be within the easement that's between the structures ideally. Sometimes the GIS isn't as accurate as we'd like it to be. It, it is showing like under the edge of the house in the diagram. Yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully that's on a property line.
Yeah, it's showing under, under the home more, less, less so the property line. But the easement is likely split between the two properties and takes the whole 10 feet width between the structures.
Because it's going to be accessed through an easement.
Mm-hmm.
Is it clear anywhere that should there are things, you know, things go awry?
Mm-hmm.
Who's gonna be liable for?
Yeah, that all is required in the easement language, so if it's not there already, it'll need to be added.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners?
Uh, could this set a precedence for other properties on that street to eventually be annexed too?
Yeah, I think this is really the only area of town where we anticipate requests for annexation. Um, so it certainly could. Um, I think the way that this is set up, there's not really access to the end of this line for other properties. So I think then you're looking at Kirkwood Road Extension, um, which is probably quite a bit more expensive, more engineering, more actual construction. So it'll just depend on how many neighbors go in together and what the need is there. Yeah, but as far as I know, Clackamas County will not um, issue new septic tank permits. So when people do really need to switch out because they're having a failure, then I think they do need to find a solution um, that's related to sanitary lines.
I, I guess if we're forward thinking about this, then we may presume that these folks further up on Kirkwood would need to tie into a sanitary main eventually. So I, I, I'm just thinking if we approve annexation and then the build-out approaching these properties from the rear, are, are we not building the thing that is gonna be a better tie-in in the future on that main on Kirkwood?
Possibly, um, but that would probably require the city to fund a lot of that because it would be well beyond what the applicants were requesting. And so the Public Works Department has approved going this route with this application and we're really only looking at annexation with this application. So if they were already in the city and were on septic and just needed to get the sanitary sewer connection, it wouldn't be land use. It would just be going straight through Public Works um, for a utility connection. Um, so we're really just looking at, does it meet the criteria from the state metro and the city for annexing into the city?
Um, so, some decisions we make are pretty compulsory and, and we're just checking to make sure that the uh, applications in line with what we expect with what's in the code. Is annexation similar in that way? Cuz I'm thinking the chain of decisioning here is we make a decision or we make a recommendation, the city council makes a decision to annex these properties. And then there's a compulsory, the Public Works Department has to provide the uh, you know, best, most efficient route.
Right.
Available to them. So I, is, is annexation a compulsory decision? Or is this a decision to be made of what's in the city's best interest?
Um, there, there is a city's best interest component of annexation. Um, certainly you wouldn't wanna annex property that would be against the city's interests. Um, and I think that's where the conditions are coming in, that there's a property proposed here that's not meeting the city's standards. Um, so I think that's where we're saying that property needs to meet all city's standards to be able to come into the city. But otherwise, annexing residential property in a residential zoning district um, that meets our comprehensive plan seems to meet with the city's in, interests of having residential property in this area. Um, so I think you, you could say no to the property that's not meeting the standards. Um, or yes, but you have to come into compliance.
And theoretically, you could make a condition of approval that uh, the build-out that is more forward-thinking and that helps build out the main to the rest of Kirkwood Road be a condition of annexation?
Yeah, I mean, you could certainly recommend that and then pu- um, city council would be um, reviewing that. And they're the ones who approve, you know, capital improvement spending and things like that. So they'd be looking at the bigger picture of that piece.
But they, they wouldn't be compelled to share the burden of the cost because
I believe they-
The burden of the cost would be a, a condition of annexation.
Well, I think the applicant would have a case that they have a way to provide sanitary service without having to go through Kirkwood Road. So I think the difference could fall upon the city if we're asking them to go above and beyond what's available to them. So the easement was put in place with the idea that these properties would connect, so it was planned in the future for that to happen.
Even if that was a condition of annexation?
That we condition them that they come up Kirkwood Road with it?
Yeah.
Well, possibly, they-
I guess, once they're annexed, they have a case for
Yeah.
Give me the, let me do the most efficient route, but
Right.
Ri- right now, we're in kind of the negotiating territory.
Sort of, although I'm not sure, I think I would prefer to have probably the city attorney to weigh in on how much we can say what's type of connection you can make if the connections are available. Are they not allowed to choose what works best for their property? Or do they have to go with the route that we choose? And if there's a huge price difference, is it on the city to cover that? Um, cuz it does need to be proportional and have a nexus, right? So they have a system that's been put in place with an easement to connect to for their properties. And other properties don't have that. It may be the case that there's a Clackamas County sanitary line that runs behind those properties and they never need to annex. We don't know, right? And so it's making a decision without knowing all the parameters. But I do know our Public Works Department's been looking at this for over two years and has felt very comfortable under both of our directors that have been in that time that this is an appropriate way to serve these properties.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanna make sure I'm just hearing it correct, then they're on septic system, uh, because they're not annexed into Gladstone. If the septic fails, they can't do anything about it.
That's my understanding, that Clackamas County will not issue a new septic permit or a permit to upgrade your septic system. They'd require you to hook in this sanitary system.
Thank you.
In our recommendation to the city council, are we including our preferred uh, route or is it really, okay?
I wouldn't um, recommend that, but you certainly could. Um, the, I think Public Works was saying the applicant has come to us with Route A, but there's a few unknowns. And so I think Public Works included Route B to say, we're still comfortable with this annexation because we feel like if Route A becomes impossible, because maybe the sanitary line is scoped and it's like, oh, it actually doesn't connect. Or, oh, there's really no way with the engineering to get that gravity or whatever it is, that we could do B. And so Public Works is saying B is, B is an option if A doesn't work. So they feel confident that the connection to city services is available.
On uh, exhibit A on 324, uh, there's not a, a legend on this uh, map. But the light colored properties, are those also unincorporated properties?
Let me just scroll to 324.
And are they currently on septic?
Yeah, I think that's the property line. It's because it was a weird little cutout when I was looking at the-
Yes, so the lighter colored are not in the city.
Okay.
The darker color is um, showing the city properties.
Mm-hmm.
So the city does have a water um, reservoir right next door there.
Do we know how many um, on Kirkwood Road? Do we know how many are currently on septic and not on sewer?
No.
Most of it is.
Is the applicant present? And if so, would you like to come forward and
Sure.
answer some questions?
We got answers. And Ross, you'll know some too, anyways.
Can we have them identify themselves first, please?
My name is Annalise Kiefer. I live at uh, one of the properties that is previously men- mentioned. Um, in looking at the map, I can tell you that some of those properties that are un- unincorporated ground do have sewer. Uh, and that was done like through like kind of like backward dealings at different times. So it's really not, you know, whether you're in an unincorporated county or the city of Gladstone, it really like the sewer doesn't, isn't that line anymore. Um, knowing that like our system's a cesspool from 1966, like it's good for now, but uh, that's not something we're willing to play around with. As we talk also about the road and like running a line up Kirkwood, well, that would be very equitable for everybody. That's all bedrock. Like bedrock comes up through my yard. And so that is a sticky situation that nobody's one to wanna put their foot in if you can avoid it. Just because of the sheer cost of blasting and channeling through that is, oh, would be a lot. Uh, there are other ways through the backside of those other properties across the street into Timothy Way. They are on city uh, sewer. So they could potentially do something similarly to what we've done if that's, if that's doable. Um, in terms of the line coming up from Ridgewood Drive, it comes into our neighbor's property. Um, and it was actually originally designed, is my understanding, to include our three properties. Uh, but there were some social dynamics that prevented that at the time. Mainly one neighbor was blocking our house from getting sewer. Because of like a beef and like the way the property had been used is like a rehab center maybe? And like all this like weird stuff. So that line, I, in my understanding, and Ross can collaborate with us, is, is meant to include our houses with it. But, you know, neighbors.
So that it's recorded when they transcribe the minutes? That'd be great, sir. Please state your name.
Uh, Ross Childers.
Okay.
And I live at 17580 and I've been there 46 years, 47. Anyway, 30 years ago, Mrs. Parent, our neighbor at the end of the street, brought the sewer line up to her house and she told us, me and Mr. Thompson and Oscar Yu who lived in the house then, we, she had three extraterrestrials put in. So she'd give us an easement through her property to hook up to the sewer. It'd be three separate lines. And the old park, excuse my language, living next door, said, no, I don't wanna hook up the sewer. So it stopped at 30 years ago. So the easement distance at the bottom of the property is more than 15 feet, which I'm understanding is wide enough, so we would have three separate lines. Um, uh, he would give Teresa next to me an easement. Uh, Sean, the guy that lives here now, he would give Teresa an easement. She would give me one and I'd give them one.
And they will all be separate lines going into that main attachment. No co-mingling.
And that's all done through the easement?
Correct.
And we haven't, we had a surveyor do it all. He got it all marked. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's really gonna be easy. There's nothing to have to come up the street. We're right there. Yeah. So.
Do you have anything else that you would like to add to the presentation that staff has done?
Uh, no, like I just said, it's just been a long time.
Yeah, yeah, this has been both at time.
Yeah.
And like the monetary portion is like woof for all the permitting and all the hoops, like
Yeah.
In all honesty, I wish that through the city council had decided just like, let us pay more for sewer service or like, but all of this like changing jurisdictions and tax zoning is onerous. And honestly, like, so I converted to sewer in a house in Portland. And it, it was six or $7,000 to decommission and get that done. This is gonna be like 20,000.
But we split that three ways.
No, that's split three ways. With, by the time we do all the other construction portions.
The F2 guy didn't tell me that, but anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we really appreciate the fact that like all three of our properties are co-minglings, those expenses. Um, you know, I worry about other people who just can't afford this, like low-income people, seniors, like, well.
They actually have-
You're at that point.
They actually have grants. There's people that will form together, uh, whether it's a homeowners association or a coalition to apply for grants. They did it with, in the city of Gladstone, uh, with one of the mobile home parks to get all new water lines and sewer lines and things like that. So, and the reason for asking, looking forward in the future is that if there's a lot of people up there that are eventually gonna have to be forced onto sewer.
There are.
Somebody might wanna start thinking about organizing things because the grants are, you know, like when my grandmother had to do it, um, and this was years ago, it was $9,000 that she had to pay.
Yeah.
And um, but they did the same thing. And this was out in the city of Aurora, Oregon.
Five houses on that side of the street that aren't hooked up to this.
Okay, is there any accessibility for those?
Around the corner.
Well, I mean, yeah, cuz you got it down Cox Lane. I'd be surprised if they had sewer in Cox Lane.
So when you say they don't have sewer, you mean they have septic, but, okay.
Or something close to it.
I'm in the process, I've been in the process helping the neighbors next door, you know. Uh, you know, and they know what they have to do and, and he has really cleaned it up down below. It really has worked.
Terms of like the, and uh, noxious weeds aren't an issue. Basically, it was like a lot of accumulation. And I would say that they've handled like 80% of it.
Yeah.
Like from the aerial shot that was taken last summer, I believe, like it looks way different.
So they're, they're willing to cooperate.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but you know, that's Teresa, the property owner is elderly and like there's just some things like getting those containers moved back. I don't know how that- I don't know how that.
Yeah, I already talked to him about that and we figured out how we're going to, I'm just going to get a guy, a friend of mine that's got a loader. It has to come back six feet, has to be behind the telephone poles. And he's been emptying those, they're only, one of them's only half, less than half empty, so.
And if he sells them, that could pay for some of his portion of the connection.
Well, I mean, you know.
There's always alternatives.
One would help them.
Yeah, but they are the ones with the most potentially to lose because of their septic issues. Like they are in dire straits.
Okay. If I may, Chair Smith, so I just want to touch on the moving them back six feet because the front yard setback is 20 feet. So we need to.
20 feet from the road, edge of the road?
From the property line. So wherever your property line is in the front, you have to come back six feet and then you need five feet to the neighbor.
Okay.
So it, like, they, they basically can't be in the front yard, is the thing. So I don't know if they work in the backyard or if it's a matter of just getting rid of them. But that, and then, you know, just making sure vehicles are on a 36-foot driveway. That's the width, maximum width that you can park vehicles on in front of the house.
I've worked on that one too.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think the driveway is a standard like two car.
Okay, it just looks like they, maybe it's the conex that makes it look like they're parked more. And then in the backyard, just making sure they're meeting all those back setbacks. Those are all written in this, in the staff report, though.
Realistically, if, if he gets those conexes empty and they don't need them, sell them and have somebody haul them off.
Commissioner Weiss, please.
I was just going to ask, if the annexation goes through for the two further properties, could the project still go through and the tie-in to, and the sanitary main extension still go through?
Yes, I think what we would recommend is that the two move forward, the two annex into the tri-city service district, the two get situated with Department of Revenue. And then the engineering could include all three. The easements could all be in place, but before they can connect that third lot, it would have to meet these requirements and then go through those pieces.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicants? Anybody else?
Neighbor gossip.
I want to thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now is the time for public testimony. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. We will first hear testimony from proponents, that is, from people who support the application. Then we will hear testimony from opponents.
Are there any proponents that wish to testify? Are there any opponents that wish to testify?
Okay, now is time for the applicant rebuttal. Does the applicant have any further comments they'd like to add? If there is no further testimony, I will entertain a motion to either close the public hearing or continue it to a date certain. What's the pleasure of the commission?
I propose we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Weiss. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson.
Yes.
Commissioner Grau.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, the public hearing has been closed at 7:25 PM. Okay, commissioners. Discussion?
I will just say, I grew up on septic systems and saw my dad personally have to replace two of them, and it's horrible.
Joe?
The sewer plant itself is not a specific condition of the annexation, is it?
It is not.
It's just a premise.
Right. Yep, it's, yep.
I'll say thank you to the commission for having this conversation around the routing and everything. I think we're charged to be thoughtful for the best interest of the city. I think it was a good conversation. I do think I'll be supporting the approval as written. But I do appreciate you all indulging in that.
Thank you for bringing that up because there's a question that I wanted to ask as well.
We need to look forward as to, because there's other places like up on the hill where there's a lot of messes of connections to water lines and sewer lines.
Chair Smith, if I may too, the Gladstone GIS mapping does show some Clackamas County connections up in that area too. So I would propose that for our city council packet, we could provide a little more detail about what's in the area and that this discussion occurred and that, you know, just kind of giving a little more background and maybe having our Public Works Director weigh in or potentially even be there for questions. We can look into all of that.
I would like that, just because I know in certain areas, I think moving forward, we need to do it very well and professionally to benefit the city and the citizens, so.
Okay. I would entertain a motion if anyone would like to make a motion moving forward.
I'll just remind that we had one condition revision from the original staff report and that we're recommending to city council for August 12th.
I would like to make a motion to approve or to approve the recommendation to city council for ANX 2501 as written, but with the revised condition from the slide. For number 10.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion, the recommendation and motion was made by Commissioner Reese and seconded by Commissioner Langston. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Commissioner Grau.
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Recommendation passed. And thank you all for coming in and sharing the history.
We'll see you August 12th for the city council meeting. You can take your sign down, yes.
Your knowledge was very helpful, thank you. All right, on to our next item, which is item number four, continued discussion of design review processes and updating of Gladstone Municipal Code.
So, just hopping right into it. We met at our last June meeting and had a great discussion about things we'd like to see changed and other examples of places. So I don't know if everybody had a chance to click on the links in the packet, but we did provide some of those references of how other cities do it to try to give you some examples and maybe there are some things in there that you liked, that you wanted to carry forward. And we can go through the packet page by page again, if that makes sense. Yeah, and then.
Is that all right with all the commissioners going, okay?
Sure, so.
That way we don't miss anything.
So interestingly, I was just sharing with City Recorder Bannick that I got an email from Hapo, which is the new housing office at DLCD, saying, we, we might have been a little over aggressive in the way we said you had to change everything. So we're, 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 we're thinking about it. I still, yes, so there may be some design review that we can leave here at Planning Commission. They said specific to residential projects. They feel that if it's not clear now, the, the next session of the legislature will clarify that the whole goal is to remove barriers to housing. So it might be that we want to make sure that any kind of housing has a direct path forward. So still working on those setbacks, making sure we're comfortable with the language related to like multifamily buildings or apartment buildings, that sort of thing. Maybe subdivisions and replats, things that affect residential development will still need to be staff level, but it's possible that the commercial level pieces would, would come before Planning Commission. So TBD on that, we'll get a little more guidance on that. But I think it still makes sense to make sure our standards are what we want them to be so that when things come to this body, it's easy to.
Did they give a reason as to why they were kind of tapering back?
They said that the language, and I shared this.
This, I mean, this actually makes me happy because I, I was afraid things were going to get lost in translation with, you know, looking to preserve our city and future generations.
Yeah, it says that the wording of ORS 1971956, which is what determines what a limited land use decision, that it also directs local governments to follow the procedures in this section and only the procedures in this section. But if you read through the section, it refers to the applicable procedures contained within a city's acknowledged comprehensive plan and land use regulations. So there may be a way to use the city's existing standards as part of this, this, these procedures and only these procedures might include what we already do. So there's more information coming on that, but I want to just say like they're thinking about it. They're hearing cities say, oh, wait, what? You know, and, and they're.
That's good to know.
They're really thinking about it. I think the focus will stay on housing and trying to reduce barriers to getting housing built as quickly as possible. So I think more on that, but I still think this is a worthwhile exercise. But timing wise, it works out. I'm not available for city council in September. So I was planning to have a hearing with you in August and then hold it until October city council. But maybe we talk about meeting again in September on this and taking some time.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to get any feedback, input, comments from commissioners regarding this?
So timing wise, I know I should know this because I went to elementary school, but as far as like further details, what would the timing look like? Legislative session?
Yes, so they didn't say.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a big unknown. I think right now we can proceed forward with what we have and consider not changing all design review over to limited land use and think about keeping some of those in with the Planning Commission. But it does say to talk with our city attorney, so that'll be the next thing that we do probably, yeah.
I am very, very pleased to hear that.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think it, it will work out well for us and what we're looking to accomplish.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think I do.
Okay, Commissioner, and I, am I saying it right? Grau, Commissioner Grau, do you have any comments?
I don't think I have enough information to comment at this time.
You're good. What about you, Commissioner Langston?
Yeah, no, I, that sounds great. I like, I like the proposed plan moving forward, so.
Commissioner Weiss?
Is, is the proposal that we bring design reviews back in front of Planning Commission for that?
That we keep them there. I mean, it's not a, a full proposal yet, but I think we might be able to keep them where they are. Except for residential, we might need to peel out residential or mixed use with residential to comply fully. But we'll get guidance on that before we bring a full packet forward for hearing.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Commissioner Volbada?
I'll be on maternity leave in August and September. I, I do trust my constituents too, you know, we, I think we've been talking about these plans and these changes for long enough that you guys know where I stand on this, but, yeah.
Okay.
I'm very happy to hear that, just because this commission has never wanted to put up roadblocks. We just want to be very, I believe everyone, part of this commission and team just cares deeply about this city and what it's going to look like 30 years from now. And we want to make the right decisions that's best, so. You just made my day, actually, so I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear it.
It's a preliminary email, it's not vetted.
It's not cast in stone, but they've probably heard from other municipalities.
I know that for a fact. I know that cities have responded and said.
So we're not the only ones that freaked out about this?
That's a big change for us.
We did kind of freak out. What? What? What did you say?
We just kept getting this call from Chair Smith.
Now, I haven't contacted anybody, but I was going to, because I, I just thought, whoa, I think we need to pull, pull back a little bit. There's got to be a compromise, so. Please continue.
Sure, so if we want to start going page by page, we can start on 4-3, which is page 59 of the packet. I don't believe there were any changes from last time where we talked about separating out size of structures. And again, this, this is a great standard because if we do take out residential, this is specific to dwelling units at 12. So that'll be easy to implement for residential. So any, any comments there about talking about having these applied to just those slightly bigger sites over a half acre, over 12 dwelling units? I think we, we covered that last time. On 4-4, we do talk about setbacks in this one. So we have that no additional minimum building setbacks for buildings or portions thereof up to 12 feet in height. So you meet the underlying setbacks of the zoning district, whatever they are, if you're up to 12 feet. So that's kind of saying one-story, commercial or residential, you know, that covers a one-story building. But if you're going to go higher than one story, you might have an impact on your neighbor if they have a single-story structure. So then we say that if your next-door neighbor has a single-story structure and you are on one of those bigger lots and you're going to be between 12 feet and 25 feet in height, then we want you to add, have a full setback of 10 feet to separate the higher building from the neighboring property. And then if you're going above 25 feet, we'd like a 15-foot setback. And.
Thank you.
Again, portions thereof, so you can have the stair step.
Is this good with everybody?
Okay.
Yep.
Please continue.
Okay, going on to 4-5, we talk about screening. We say screen mechanical equipment. I think we meant to turn these to, oh, okay, so it's all of these things. Before I had it as or, but it made sense to me to include all of these things. So you have to screen in your refuse areas, screen your mechanical equipment, your wall-mounted HVAC, and provide buffering and screening of industrial uses when you're near commercial, institutional, or residential. So just kind of clarifying and adding that wall-mounted equipment.
Okay.
Any questions there? Okay, 4-6, we get into our building materials. We talked a lot about this one last time. We decided aluminum composite material on no more than 20% of a building or the portion of the building visible from the adjacent roadway. So allowing some level of that, which we've seen quite a bit of in town, and it looks quite nice on the buildings we've seen. And then on.
Right in front of Public Works, isn't that the same thing?
Public Works was a metal building, I believe, to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah. They added some windows, I think, and some.
Yeah, but the panels in the front, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, they look very nice.
They do. And then we've got our lighting, where we added shielded and directed downward. We left the foot candles to make maximum across the site. Page 4-7, we didn't change anything related to trash disposal and recycling. This seems to work really well for applicants. We've had no complaints about meeting these standards. And we haven't had any complaints from Gladstone disposal about not having adequate facilities or anything like that. Cruising right along to 4.
Dash 11.
4-11 is the next change. Landscaping. So here we added the native drought tolerant plant species in our minimum 15%. I like that, that's very numerical and easy to implement. That also seems to be a standard that most properties can meet. I think the only time we've seen it not met was in existing auto dealership that had way less. And so used that if you don't meet it, you can come into compliance by this much, by adding some landscaping. But generally, I think 15% on a fresh development site is really doable and adds a nice green element to the property. So I'd recommend.
Is there a preferred list of plants?
There's not a preferred list of plants, there is trees through Clackamas County, but there's not a plant list currently. It is something we could reference if there's a.
I like that idea. How do you, how do you all feel about that?
I guess my question would be, like, who's confirming or who, who then would be like, yes, this, I would assume that this is.
Yeah, I think what I sort of lean on is you put native drought, drought tolerant plant species in the, in the code requirement. And then the landscape architect has to assure that. So I'm the one who reviews that. So like the new food cart pod, you know, I went out there and I was like, yeah, those, yep, okay, you know. So we could have a list, but it would be me or another planner who would review that. So I don't have a special expertise in that, but could follow a list if there was.
Is there any cost impact if we did have a list? That said, this is the recommendations?
I could look and see if other cities have lists and like how broad they are. Because I think if you had a lot of options, then no, because then, you know, oh, those three things aren't available, but the other seven are, I can take my pick kind of thing.
Yeah, you could reference potentially like OSU, like they have their master gardener program and yeah, that's what I would recommend.
I love that suggestion. That's excellent.
Okay. Okay, let me just write that down.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Great. Page four 12. We require high efficiency irrigation, trees, we reference the Clackamas County approved street trees list. That's what the public works director asked us to include. And then you can, the use of sod is required along McGlaughlin Boulevard. That's what ODOT wants to see there. They don't want any street trees. They don't want any leaves to deal with on there right away. That is what we end up having. Move forward to design review. So let's see.
Looks like four 16.
Thank you. You're so quick to get to them.
Sorry.
No, that's great. So here would be an important piece. If we end up keeping design review at the planning commission level, it would be nice to have a, a few that don't require a full review if they're smaller. And I think we've talked about these before, but buildings or site additions, less than 250 square feet, not visible from streets, sidewalks or public parks. 250 square feet, 200 square feet is what triggers a building permit review. So at 250 square feet, you're kind of in that range. If you're on commercial property currently, it automatically needs design review because it's a new structure or in addition to a structure on, on any property that's not residential. But if we exclude those and allow the like picnic covers and things like that, that are in the rear of the property, I think that makes a lot of sense and is really business friendly if, if people are investing in their businesses or in their sites and they just want to do a small piece. And then also the improvements in city parks consistent with an approved park site plan. So that would be like the trail that we just approved. That was in the Gladstone Nature Park Plan. And there's some funding for a restroom and picnic shelter at Gladstone Nature Park that are also included in the nature park site plan. So that would be able to just move into design without needing to come for a land use hearing. So any comments or questions about that?
Is there an implication if that, if the building or site less than 250 square feet, if, if it's close to residential or it backs up to somebody's home? Is there any?
They would still be subject to the standards in the code, so they'd still have to meet setback standards and things like that. And we'd review that with a building permit.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. If it's under 200 square feet and it never even comes for a building permit, we may never even see it. But in that way, it shouldn't have impact to its neighboring property because it's small enough.
And that would be applicable to like a, 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 a small storage shed outside the backyard.
Right. Those are technically required to be at least three feet setback from properties, even on residential. Five, if you are not meeting certain criteria, but three is like, although in the R5 zone, there is a zero foot minimum. If you, for either the rear or the side, if you meet certain criteria, it's something I talk to people about a lot. But nobody ever tells me where their property is located. So I always have to give them. Well, if you're in there.
Trying to be sneaky.
You're this, you're that. So.
Just like my friend who called you. Yeah.
I give all the standards.
Yeah.
We do our best. I do get occasionally like hypothetically speaking, or I'm asking for a friend. Okay. So that's the design review. That was the only proposed change, I believe, to the design review chapter. There's some submittal requirements in there, which is folks, sorry, the approval. Okay, because the, the public works department did ask for us to add that we get either that public utility easement along the front of a property, because that is something that's specific to our, our subdivision or land division code, that we apply those public utility easements along the frontage. Unless we're like in the Portland Avenue or Town Center where we want a zero foot setback, then we wouldn't need that public utility easement because the building would be built up to the line. And then the construction management plan that we once submitted prior to the public improvement plan that we've talked about here.
Okay.
So then the question becomes, do we still feel comfortable removing minor exceptions as part of design review? If planning commission is reviewing them, do you want the minor exceptions left in there? Or do you want to rely on adjustments and variances, which I think do cover it? So an applicant would need to apply for a design review with an adjustment if they were wanting to vary the standards versus having an automatic minor exception that's permitted today.
I think that we want to review it. How do you guys feel?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll continue to recommend removing the minor exceptions out of there. Thank you.
Looks like four dash 20.
Thank you. Four dash 20. I think we just did that one, right?
Okay.
Did we get that one? Yep, four dash 20 and four dash 21, we're removing minor exceptions and then
Four thirty, four thirty.
Which moves us, oh, I'd like to stop on four 24. I have a new one. So at the very bottom, subsection four, that requires newspaper notice. So we, we reached out to our DLCD representative about this because the city provides newspaper notice in, is it the Lake Oswego Review, Tammy? So Lake Oswego Review, which I don't know how many residents in Gladstone are subscribing to that. And newspaper just seems to be a really clunky way to get your information about land use. So our DLCD rep said, it's not required by state law that you put notice in newspapers. And a lot of jurisdictions don't do it anymore because they either don't have a local circulation or, you know, it's so expensive to, it costs a hundred bucks at least each time you're doing it. So with that, knowing that it's not a state law that we're required to have it, I do recommend we remove subsection four and don't require newspaper notice for like, so we had newspaper notice published for tonight's hearing because it was going to planning commission with a recommendation before city council. So we were required to publish notice of this hearing. So Tammy, do you know off the top of your head how much that cost the city to do that? I don't. I, I think it's over a hundred dollars usually. It's like a hundred and thirty dollars or something to post.
What was the recommendation, how we would notify people though?
So they will still get the mailed notice if it's near their property. We, if it's a project like this that required newspaper notice, it's going on to DLCD's website and that's getting circulated as well. The city could also put it on their website and they're building the strategy right now to be able to do that. So I think we do have the pieces in place of the way people actually get information, which is no longer the little printed ad in the newspaper.
That's a website and social media potentially.
Social media too.
All of our agendas are posted on social media, so.
Yeah.
How does everybody feel about that?
Having never read the Lake Oswego newspaper as a Gladstone resident, I'm okay with that.
I never have either.
What about the newsletter?
Yeah, it depends. The newsletter deadlines just sometimes come at, at a time where we don't know exactly what the dates are that we're going to have hearings. So we have talked about putting in, like when we were doing the Gladstone Town Center, and that's a long project. We were able to do a write-up in the newsletter and say, here's when we're going to have a public meeting. Here's where, when we're going to be doing things. But a lot of times when an application submitted, we don't necessarily have the lead time to get it in the newsletter on deadline and then still make a public hearing.
That makes sense.
So we could, and we've talked about maybe having an occasional like planner's corner kind of in the newsletter potentially, if that made sense too. And there was space for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, or just like what's, what's going on.
For those of us that do read the newsletter.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
I do too.
That's how I find out stuff.
We, we could request that the planner do a TikTok video.
That, that would be interesting. I do have some, you know, younger staff members in my office that would be much better at that. We could certainly help with something, but, but I believe the city is actually pursuing a social media strategy right, right now. So I think that that's all happening, all that new energy is going on right now for the city. So, okay, I'm hearing general consensus that we don't need to be posting newspaper notice any longer.
And I just wanted to let commissioners know the reason why it's in the Lake Oswego is because the Milwaukee Review no longer is published. It's only published once a month.
And it's online only.
And it's online and the, the Lake Oswego meets our, the criteria for posting. So that is the reason why.
Yeah.
Good reason.
Yeah. Okay, so then we move on to four dash 27. It's the beginning of where we talk about how decisions are made. Currently, we have lotline adjustment and type one partitions as a city administrator decision. Those per that ORS were listed as limited land use, which would be the type two. So administrative decision, let me see if I can find the next wording. Okay. So we're adding a new section, four dash 30. So the way it's written was complying with what we thought the state law was saying. So what we could do, I, I think lotline adjustments, partitions, subdivisions, replats and non-conforming uses, those probably all still make sense to not bring before the planning commission unless, you know, let's discuss that. But design reviews. So in other cities I've worked in, there's either been a threshold for what size design review comes to the planning commission versus what's a staff level. So like in Sherwood, for example, up to 10,000 square feet with staff level. And anything above that, they had a hearings officer too. So 10 to 25,000 went to a hearings officer and over 25,000 went to their planning commission. We could do something like that. We could just say anything residential, residential or mixed use with residential goes to staff. All other design review comes to planning commission. Whatever, we, we can, we can propose what, what we want here. And then in, in the two months until the next time we talk about this, hopefully we'll have clarity about what we really need to do. And maybe that is exactly what we can do.
I like the idea about what you said about the residential, but everything else needs to come before the planning commission. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I just think about, I don't remember which unit, like multifamily, because I know those have popped up as like sore spots in the past.
Good point.
And if we're able to do it by like lot, lot size or square footage, like.
How about a just single household, one single?
Those are already exempt from design review. Any middle housing is exempt. So it might be that we can, we can leave design review in planning commission for now. It did read as if residential specifically would need to be a staff level decision. But I mean, we're happy, I'm happy to leave it in with planning commission for the time being and let those conversations continue. If that makes sense to everybody.
But yeah, we have had issues in the past and it was multi, multi dwelling. There wasn't any really well-defined clarity to.
Well, now, but now we are proposing, you know, those additional setbacks, the additional screening standards. We are trying to ameliorate some of those concerns. However, you know, I know we've heard near Olson Wetlands that there could have been a multifamily there, but for the parking requirements, and now there's no parking requirement, right? So we may see that come through. And we'll just need to make sure we're complying with state law when we process that.
Yeah, because there was, it was very clear there was a wetland there and it's going to have to reduce the amount of units that were constructed.
Yeah. So why don't we do this? Why don't we remove design review from this list and put it back under planning commission purview? And then we'll have the conversations that we need to have with the city attorney and with the state representatives to make sure that we're complying with state law when we move forward with anything. And then when we come back in September, we'll be clear with what we're proposing.
Input?
Couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Just a clarifying question. When you say middle housing, is there a unit threshold?
Yep. So middle housing is duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhouse and cottage clusters. There's no limit on the number of townhouses or the number of cottage clusters.
That's my next question. Okay. So like a multifamily building with several units?
If it's not a cottage, if it's not meeting cottage cluster standards and being reviewed as a multifamily, then maximum will be four. Four is not considered multifamily. It's considered quadplex. So five and up is considered multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
Are you okay with this too?
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. Is that it?
Four thirty and four thirty one.
That's just again, those are the review types. Yep, I think we've covered that.
About thirty two, you, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Adjust lettering. Okay.
Yep, just adjusting those review types.
I think we've, I think we've covered it.
I think we've covered it. So then if it works for this group, I know Commissioner Volbetta is out for a bit after this meeting. We don't have any business on the agenda for our August meeting, so maybe we take an August break and then come back in September, ready to work hard again and waiting for your return, if that works for everybody.
Does that work for everyone?
Generally, yes. I would say if there's any need to come together for the build YMCA building for anything
Oh, sure.
That I would say that we should.
They would have had to have applied already because we
I know it's so needed.
We need time to do a completeness review and then put out public notice, which will still, no newspaper on that because it doesn't go to plant, city council. But they still have the 20 day mailed notice to neighbors. So there's nothing that's in the queue that could pop in that amount of time. Yeah, I'm, I'm out for 10 days, so there's definitely going to be a lull.
So is everyone all right with it?
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Tammy, do we have anyone that wants to share business with, with us?
I've received no requests.
No requests. Okay. Well, then let's move on to business from the commission. Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm, I will be going on to maternity leave for the next two months. So I will hand over my co-chair duties to Commissioner Langston for August and September. I will intend to be back in October. Well, with pictures.
Well, no, 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 you need to come and bring the baby so we can see the baby.
Maybe if I'm on Zoom, I'll bring him.
No, no, you need to bring him so he can hold him. Commissioner Wees, do you have any business to share?
Uh, no new business. I will just extend to you that I do not mind having someone join via video. So if you get into a position where you would rather join via video, I know that that is allowable, I think, within our standard meeting practice.
Commissioner Langston?
Uh, I just wanted to share, I, I listened to a, a article by Vox today about suburbs and how they're working out and the history of them. And it's a pretty good listen. I think it's on Apple News, but yeah, I would encourage you guys to check it out.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
I had the opportunity to attend the grand opening of the Arlington Tap House. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah. I've heard good things about it.
Yeah, it's a good place.
Okay.
And yeah, I appreciate tonight's discussion a lot. Yeah. Thank you, everybody for your input.
We have
Being so receptive of certain ideas.
Yeah. Mr. Gra.
Just happy to be here and it, it just really does seem like you have a really cohesive and thoughtful team. So I'm just happy to be a part of it.
We're happy to have you. Commissioner Carlson?
Um, I know that there's a lot in public notice about this, but just I'd probably urge everybody to do this.
Um, I know that there's a lot in public notice about this, but just I'd probably urge everybody to, uh, do the survey uh, regarding the library usage. Great ideas on there, so just spread the word about it.
And on the twenty-second is the open house there?
There is a open house and that will be on the twenty-second. Uh, let me pull it up here. At the old library, everyone's, uh, invited. It's from five thirty to seven thirty.
Yeah, prime real estate. Okay, um, I don't have a whole lot to add other than, I'm glad everyone made it safe through the Fourth of July holiday. And it's just such a sincere honor to work with all of you. I love the discussions. I love how everyone brings their talent and gifts to the table. And we are a very cohesive team and it is an honor to serve with all of you. And on that note.
I, I do have one more piece of information to, to ask you about. So with, um, your city recorder, me, being at many of the meetings in the evenings, your city council, this meeting, there's parks board, there's all kinds of meetings. We have been talking internally about meeting times. So there's, you know, five PM is end of workday here and then six thirty, that's, um, that is a productive hour and a half, but it's an hour and a half of kind of just having to fill. So we just wanted to kind of get the pulse about maybe starting earlier. Does there, I know people work and so five PM might not be possible, but a lot of groups have been moving to five thirty in the city. Is that a possibility for this group?
I wouldn't be able to be here until six.
Six o'clock?
Yeah, which is a compromise.
Yeah, I work until five thirty typically.
Would you be able to be here by six?
It would be very close.
Very close.
But possibly.
Okay.
Commissioner Grau?
I could do six.
I, I could do six. I start my days at four. I work east coast time, so.
Oh, wow.
I can do anytime after two.
Yeah, I often work until five thirty, so six would work for me. What about you, Commissioner Langston?
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, I could pull that off once, once a month.
Commissioner Weiss?
Uh, I, I think we heard from a commissioner that six may be a difficult time to hit the beginning of. So I would be more comfortable if, if everyone felt confident in six to make that decision and keep it six thirty otherwise.
If that's going to be a struggle, we'll just keep it, it's a, it would, okay.
Okay.
I guess I take care of that.
Okay. Yeah, just let us know if anything changes and we'll talk again, but that sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, six thirty, so we'll, um, not plan to get you any materials for an August meeting. We'll plan to convene in September, six thirty.
One more thing. I had kind of a revelation thinking about a previous meeting. I know Commissioner Weiss had mentioned possibly removing barriers on appeals.
Yeah.
And that you were going to look into that. Is that still possible?
Well, so as far as barriers on appeals, um, there is a, a small fee for an appeal in Gladstone. It, it's two hundred and fifty dollars here. So I did look at other jurisdictions. That is a common amount. Other amounts are half the, um, submittal amount, which can be, like here in Gladstone, if you submit a design review, your minimum cost is one thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Depending, and it's depend, dependent on your construction cost. So you'd be looking at, you know, close to seven hundred dollars if you were in some other jurisdictions. So we are at a lower, um, appeal cost, um, barrier. Is that, was that the biggest?
I, I don't remember, maybe.
And, and then as far as who can appeal a project, that's really, um, required by state law that you come to a hearing, that you provide, um, testimony related to, um, something that can be appealed upon. So like I don't think they meet section seventeen point five six of the code, that sort of thing. If you come and say, I don't think this works in our neighborhood and then you appeal. I have seen where people say, um, I testified at the hearing and I'm opposed because it doesn't meet this section and they didn't specifically say that at the hearing, but they're still, they still move forward with their appeal. I have, that I think would, would be the case here as well. There's nothing in our code that says you can't, you, you know, that you'd be excluded from that. You have to raise, you, you do have to testify in writing or in person on a land use action to have standing to appeal and that's state law. So we can't change who can raise an appeal, but we can, you know, we could look at fees, which I did do. But there is a cost to the city to run an appeal. It goes to city councils, there's a hearing component, there's staff time, there's noticing. So it's already a pretty low barrier, I would say, relatively speaking. But please talk about that.
Do we have any criteria set up for anyone that's on low income?
I don't know the answer to that question. I, that would be a city council decision.
The only things that I'm, the only, uh, thing I'm aware of regarding low income is for water sewer assistance.
But not for the court?
For planning, um.
Or appeals.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything at this moment.
And that should be stipulated in whatever for the, for our court, right?
Well, it would be in our fee schedule.
And the master fee schedule.
So we don't have it in our fee schedule right now. Um, we just approved a new fee schedule, which we do twice a year.
Twice a year.
So, um, that would be something city council could consider. They would be looking at the next fee schedule for starting January first.
Could we put that somewhere in the queue for it to be considered for the next master fee schedule? And that would perhaps help.
Yeah.
Regarding, are you okay with that?
Totally.
And it, it sounds like if we already do something for utilities, that we have some threshold for determining, um, um, meeting that standard.
There are guidelines for that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, how does everybody else feel about that?
Okay.
I, I think that's one avenue. I, I also think, um, potentially opening a path to appeal through the will of the planning commissioner, the will of the city council and letting that be a potential other avenue that someone could go to, to open.
Yeah.
Appeals process.
The, um, concern I would have there is just that as a property owner who's applying for a permit or like a development review permit, you are guaranteed by state law, this certain due process of how you move forward in that. And so if no one testifies at your hearing or before your hearing and a decision is rendered, there's, and there's no one on record to appeal it. If the planning commission were to say, oh, someone came to us at the following meeting and said they wanted to have a chance to talk about this, it, it wouldn't meet state law or really be fair to that applicant to open it back up.
To your point.
Yeah, I, I think it would be, um, to open an appeals process on someone that has standing for appeal.
Okay, yeah. And again, um, we, I would really want to check with the city attorney because I think state laws are really clear about what we can and can't do there. But we.
It's just like.
We're already talking to the city attorney about the design review, so happy to ask that question too.
And it, it, even in what I read, it talks about land, land use appeals and the right to request a continuance to this hearing, to have the record left open for seven days.
Yes, anyone can request a record be left open for seven days. So if someone had come tonight and said, we request seven days, that doesn't mean you have to continue your public hearing.
Right.
You can say the record is open for seven days, um, and then anyone can submit anything. And then the planning commission could come back together and deliberate on what's been submitted. You don't have to keep the record open.
Yeah.
But it is state law that you have to allow the first evidentiary hearing, anyone can ask for a seven day record left open.
Just for that reason.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Is there anything else? Commissioners? Heather, nothing?
Nothing else for me. I'm just making notes about appeal barriers and so I make sure to follow up.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn our planning commission.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Langston made a motion to adjourn the meeting and it was seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Car- Carlson.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at eight twelve PM.